Okay, well, welcome one and all. Nice to see everybody for our City of Kalamazoo Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, June 17th, 2024. So officially, call us to order here. And our First Order Businesses Roll Call, Kirk Burling.
Commissioner Cooney.
Present.
Commissioner. Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. May I please have a motion to excuse Commissioner Decker?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess, supported by Commissioner Hoffman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Nay? All right, thank you. Next is Communications Manager Espa.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now is an opportunity for public comments at this Committee of the Whole Meeting. Public comments are two minutes, and you can comment on any item that you would like. If there's anyone in the chambers who wants to make a public comment for our Committee of the Whole Meeting, please come forward, state your name, where do you live in the city. Seen, known. We are on to the work of our Committee of the Whole. Manager Espa.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, our topic is Brownfield, and we have a Brownfield plan for 5135 and 5147 Portage Street. The item is actually on the agenda this evening for approval, but we wanted to get before you and give you more information prior to that meeting. So I'd like to introduce our Sustainable Development Coordinator, Jamie McCarthy. Jamie?
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for having us this evening. As City Manager mentioned, we are here with a Brownfield redevelopment project, and we're excited to be able to bring you actually an entire package. And we're going to talk to you about a series of approvals that'll be coming before your Board, really over the next several months and into the fall. The way these are sort of timed out over several months and several meetings, it's just not possible for us to bring forward everything on one meeting agenda. And so we thought we would bring forward this project, talk to you about it as a whole, and then talk to you about the different actions that are going to be coming forward. And we thought this way, we could tell you about all of the different components of the project and allow you an opportunity to ask any questions and get all of the information you want about this project. So with me today, I have Paul Thuringer, who is another staff member in Community Planning and Economic Development Department with me today. I also have David Stejink, who is with Fishback. He works as a consultant for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and has been really involved in this project. And then I also have two individuals who are representing the development company who is working on this project as well. And all of the city staff and development team have really been working on this project probably since the middle of last year and into the fall of last year, and have started to bring forward these different pieces at the beginning of 2024, and now have, I think the first actions have been taken by the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority last month, and now already kind of served up on your agenda this month. So we're going to start talking about this project and talking about the action that you have in front of you on your consent agenda today, and get into all of the various incentive pieces and the overall investment tonight, and then certainly want to open it up for questions for you all at the end of the meeting today. So I'm going to get us kicked off. I want to talk a little bit about the area and the city that we're talking about today, and then we'll talk about the project concepts as we move forward here. So where are we talking about? A lot of times, I come forward and I'm talking about downtown or areas outside of downtown. I'm pretty excited to bring forward a project that is much further south. We're talking about the southeast part of the city. We are south all the way to the airport, down at I-94 along Portage Road. So an important commercial corridor, definitely an important transportation corridor along the city, and really a gateway into the city if you think about it. It's an area also that has seen a lot of investment in the I-94 interchange and some difficulties with that long construction project that's happened there. If you've been to businesses along that corridor, you've seen a lot of turnover and a lot of vacancy and a lot of closure for a lot of reasons. But we've seen a lot of businesses struggling along that corridor. And so as this project came forward to staff and to our Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, we certainly were excited about the way this project could be a key catalyst or investment for this corridor. The specific project we're talking about is at 5135 and 5147 Portage Road. So we are on the east side of Portage Road, just south of I-94, and it was the former Brewster's Restaurant, if you've ever visited that location. It is closed now, so a vacant restaurant building. And it was a former gas station. And so this is a Brownfield site because of a former leaking underground storage tank and some of the contaminants that are still in the soil and groundwater at that location. In just a minute, I'm going to have folks come up here and talk about the new development there. But certainly, since I've been at the city for five years, and I know my colleagues have talked about before my time, over the last couple of decades since this site has been contaminated, there've been different development concepts, different projects that have come to us at the city, talking about this site. And it's really been hard to get anything to kind of stick, any projects to really materialize in this site, in part because of these costs that have been added because of the contamination at this site. Oftentimes, we think of something right along I-94 as a really highly desirable development site, but this one has been tricky. It has a lot of cost associated with it. It's a very complicated site, and so it needs a little bit of public incentive, and we feel like we have a pretty good incentive package together for you all to consider this evening. So you can see the site as it exists today. I just wanted to show you a couple of pictures here. See those orange cones that have been out there for quite some time, a couple of years now? But again, this great corner parcel, got a lot of infrastructure you can see that has to be worked around. It's really just been covered in this asphalt parking lot, in part, I think because of that contamination. It's sort of been sitting here like this for a couple of decades now. If you guys want to come up and talk a little bit about the future concept here, and we can talk a little bit about the challenges to the site, and then PJ and I will come and talk about, we'll wrap it up with some of the incentives that we are going to recommend pairing together to make this project possible.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Artemo, and I work for a company called AVB. We're based in Kalamazoo County and have done a lot of work in the City of Kalamazoo in recent years, and are excited about this project coming forward. And Greg Dobson is here from AVB as well, and David Stejink from Fishback. So Jamie, thanks for the presentation and the summary. As Jamie mentioned, this site, this opportunity, kind of caught our eye as an important gateway for the Kalamazoo region, but also specifically the Millwood neighborhood and City of Kalamazoo. It has been in this condition for several decades. The restaurant was built in the 1960s. It was repurposed by Brewster's about 25 years ago. The south end of the site is actually a former gas station that was vacated in the 1990s and has been in a state of just simple grass and parking lot since that time. The reason this corridor has significance, one, it's at Interstate I-94, and a lot of visitors come into Kalamazoo from Interstate I-94. Also, the Kalamazoo-Battle Creek International Airport is right on this corridor, so we get a lot of visitors from that facility every day. And the regional employers on this corridor include Stryker, Pfizer, Zoetis. I know the City of Kalamazoo has worked with a number of those employers on different programs to grow within the region as well and provide really important jobs for the community. One of the things that they need to be sustainable in this region is the ability to do short-term lodging and hospitality services. And being able to do that in the City of Kalamazoo, at kind of the front door to a portion of the city, at the south edge of the city, is really appealing from our perspective as well. So a little more information on the project, and I know this is technically Portage Road. In City Kalamazoo, I know it's Portage Street. So just to be clear, we do understand there's a Portage Street corridor, but this is, we looked it up, this section is actually called Portage Road. Just use the arrows, Jamie? So from a site plan standpoint, we've tried to do a somewhat urban building. So we've looked through the city's zoning ordinance for many years of different projects. There's been some updates in this area. This site has been historically very suburban in nature, with big parking lots and buildings set back from the road. This concept is trying to change the tone of that a bit and bring it up closer to the street, respect the sidewalk, and bring a new feel, a new environment and atmosphere to this corridor. We think it will serve as somewhat of a springboard for future development, hopefully. The area has been challenged by the construction projects. There's been three or four restaurants that have closed in the area. There's a fair amount of vacancy right now. There's a hotel immediately to the east of this site that had a fire. And so there's numerous challenges to making this corridor to be kind of a showpiece for the community. We hope this is one of those first steps in that process. It's also a unique site because it sits on a corridor that splits two municipalities. So the City of Portage is actually across the street, across Portage Road, and so it creates this kind of scenario where if nobody's focused on it, it can have some loose edges to it, and that's what's happened along with some of the restaurants there, as they need some focus. And so that's what we're intending to do here. A rendering is on the screen now of kind of what we're visualizing. The concept is we're working with Marriott, which is an international hotel brand. Their Residence Inn product is one of their premier brands and has a great functional use for those regional employers and being able to house them for a temporary period, but also provide kitchen-type units and kind of a living space for them as well. So you see here, this is you looking from the south, seeing two west from air view boulevard. So as you leave the airport, this will be the view of the facility, and as you drive into the facility. Another view here, a little bit closer up. We're trying to do enhanced finishes and a lot of design elements that really bring kind of a modern, contemporary feel, but also respects the corridor as well, as best as we can. And you saw some of the pictures of the existing condition as well. I think there's another image here of the project. We're in the design phase right now. As Jamie said, we've been working on this for about a year and a half now, I think, or more, trying to put the pieces together, but we're getting closer. So, and I'll leave it on this one. Greg, did you have thoughts as well you wanted to add to the project or complications related to the site?
Well, you covered it perfectly, Kurt, but I guess the only thing I would add is this site is a tight site, as you can see from the aerial view that Kurt showed you. And so part of the magic was trying to, you know, fit enough hotel rooms on that site and parking, et cetera, that could accommodate future guests. And so it's been a challenging one. I think we've made use of every inch of that site to get what you see on the screen. I guess I would also say that one of the interesting things in our due diligence is you don't see that old gas station until you look under the ground, and we have done that, the ground penetrating radar, to see the old islands and so on that are still there and need to be removed as a part of it. And we've had great support from Fishback, MD Eagle, and others on this project. So we're really excited about it, and we'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Okay. Well, we'd like to talk a little bit more about the incentives package then here, and just the overall investment in the community. So we'll talk a bit about numbers now. This overall is around a $23 million, just shy of $23 million investment in the corridor here on this project. And the vast majority of that, as you can see here, is private investment from the development firm. But we are pairing together to make this possible, some added incentive to especially take care of a lot of the Brownfield costs, some private or some public dollars in that as well. And so what we have in front of you all today is a recommendation both from the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and from our staff, really with a couple of goals in mind. We wanted to try to get this project back onto the tax rolls as quickly as possible, although we do understand it's going to take some time and it's going to take some patience, right? It's going to take some public investment that eventually will have a payoff to the public as well. And we'll talk a little bit more detail about that here just in a minute. And we're also, though, trying to pair together as many sources of public support as possible too, to kind of spread around the investment as well. And so I'll talk about that. So as far as tax incentives, we have proposed Commercial Redevelopment Act here. So in addition to that private investment, the three bottom boxes you see are the public investment, and that's going to total around $3 million, we think. Some of this is an estimate, right? Your tax benefit is going to equal whatever the taxes are over time. So we're kind of estimating those as best we can. So that tax incentive PJ's going to talk about in a moment, but it's essentially a 12-year tax benefit, and so we estimate that could be just shy of a $1 million benefit to the project over that 12-year period. In addition to that, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has applied to the State of Michigan for a $1 million Eagle grant, so that would be an environmental grant. So that wouldn't be something that the city would be having to pay for directly, but would be able to benefit the project. So that's one way we can make sure, you know, city taxpayers aren't bearing that burden all alone. And so we've gotten really positive feedback from the state, and I'm hoping that next month, as early as next month, we may have a grant contract coming forward for all of you to approve, and that would be another $1 million that could go into the project. That would be really covering a lot of those Brownfield cleanup costs, that soil, that groundwater, a lot of those direct cleanup costs from that leaking underground storage tank and that contaminated soil and water that's left on the site. And then in addition to that, the item that you have on your agenda this evening would be tax increment financing. So that's from the Brownfield Plan. Moneys, taxes that are generated and paid by the development from the new construction, there are taxes that are still paid even while that tax incentive, that tax abatement is in place for 12 years. There are still some taxes that are being paid by the development, that are generated by the new building, right? So if this building were never built, those taxes would never be generated. So by approving this plan, new taxes are generated, and just those new taxes are captured. And the proposal we have in front of you is to kind of stack all those things. We're not trying to stretch them out. We're stacking them all, trying to get everything paid quickly and back on the tax rolls. And so during that time, the BRA is recommending that about $1 million, just over $1 million, could be reimbursed back again to the project for some additional Brownfield costs on the site, especially the demolition, some lead and asbestos abatement, and some site preparation costs that are eligible under the Brownfield Act. I say up to that $1 million. It's going to be actual costs that are reimbursed. There's a whole program where the developer submits their costs, and those are reimbursed over the life of the project. I'll speak just a little bit to that as well, since this is on your agenda this evening. The proposed Brownfield Plan is up to 14 years of reimbursement to the developer. So that's really the 12 years and the 14 years are happening at the same time, again, to kind of condense that reimbursement period. After the 14 years, we're proposing five years of the tax capture would continue into our city's local Brownfield revolving fund, and so that's another public benefit that would happen under the Brownfield Plan. That would be, our estimate is up to $630,000 that would be generated into this local fund, that then the Brownfield Authority would be able to invest in other Brownfield cleanup projects. So just another public benefit that happens from a project like this. And I just wanted to mention that the administrative costs, staff costs are also paid for through this plan. So something for you to all consider, this is sort of a self-funded administration cost for this plan that get taken out before a developer is reimbursed, any costs. But we wanted to talk a little bit about the potential growth and benefits for this region and for the city. All of these tax benefits are available through state law, only when there is growth and benefits that we can demonstrate. And so we'd certainly talked about how we feel like this development can really be a catalyst for growth in this region and through this corridor of the city. There is some direct job creation, though, through this development. We're seeing a commitment of about 15 full-time equivalent jobs at this site. We also know that there will be some direct increase in economic activity. We were just calculating that there are about 25,000 hotel stays per year, so it's about 25,000 hotel guests that will be staying, and we can assume buying meals, doing some amount of shopping while they're staying at the hotel right on this corridor. And so we know that there will be economic development and economic activity that's gained through more folks staying at the hotel there, through the new development there. And then we also wanted to point out that new tax growth. And so we know about, we're estimating after that 19 years of tax incentive, once this property goes right back onto, fully onto the tax rolls, we estimate that there's about a quarter of a million dollars in new tax benefit to the community, right? That about $25,000 in taxes will be generated, property taxes will be generated through the new development here each year. I did want to also point out, and I didn't mention it earlier, of that $1 million of both Brownfield and tax incentives, if we break that down, because there are various millages that are paid across property taxes, we looked at it, and about 20% of that is city operating and solid waste. So if you're thinking about, you know, how is the community overall supporting a project like this? The City of Kalamazoo is responsible for, or I guess paying for about 20% of those millages, and then the other 80% is roughly State of Michigan and all of our other taxing jurisdictions, schools, colleges, county, and other taxing jurisdictions. So just to give you a little bit of an idea of what that breakdown looks like. All right. So we're getting close here, and then we'll open it up for questions. But part of the reason for us to bring these projects to you and to talk about all of the different incentives, we want to give you an idea of what the approval schedule looks like. What are you guys going to see on your agendas? We're trying to give you a little bit more information upfront, because now you're going to start seeing things hit your agenda over different months and different meetings. And so PJ, if you want to talk a little bit about what they're going to see over the next several meetings, and you can talk a little bit more about the tax abatement as well.
Great.
Thank you, Jamie. Yeah, we're throwing a lot at you. But the commercial redevelopment tax abatement is a 50% tax abatement for a period of 12 years. The economic development incentive allows for a hotel to be constructed by closing gap due to inflated construction costs and cost of money. I mean, those are the two biggest things that we're seeing right now, where a lot of projects are not moving forward. Construction prices are crazy, and Greg and Kurt could speak to that. And then, you know, as everyone knows, interest rates are really high right now. We're really hoping that it helps jumpstart the economic development in this area. As Jamie mentioned earlier, Kurt, we've seen closure in this area as a gateway project to surrounding the city. It's a community. The Millwood neighborhood is just reforming, a little bit of this opportunity. Millwood is the largest geographic neighborhood and second-largest population in the city, and so engaging with residents, giving them some love. It's been, you know, a place that you get to know, particularly this heartening of The thing that's important is that.